Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees held here on September 8th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to call us to order and declare a quorum, which we do have. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the East Texas, one state, under God, aligned and indivisible.
Next item is Public Comments on Agenda Items. Monica, has anybody signed up tonight? Okay. Next is the Superintendent Recognitions, and members will be caught, please come into the front. Our newest addition to the board. Our first item is Superintendent's Leadership Award. Backpack Buddies, a Ministry of Churches Touching Lives for Christ.
We doing pictures first? Well, of course, I'm going to say something. Well, first of all, the Superintendent's Leadership Award is really for going above and beyond, and they have done this, and then some. Something that maybe started out as an isolated event has turned into a community and citywide coordinated event. Every church has it on their calendar. This is a big deal. This is something that the community rallies around, and they truly help some of our most underserved children in the entire school district. You know, I've gone to some churches and I've talked to them about what this means, and it's far beyond supplies. Students, a lot of times when they come to school, the idea of not feeling equal or feeling inadequate, because maybe there are certain things they don't have that the classmate next to them does. They have been a great equalizer to so many of our students. We serve 75% economically disadvantaged, and the amount of backpacks and supplies they provide to students over the last two decades is truly phenomenal. I mean, that is real impact. Thank you for being our partners. We really appreciate it, and thank you for helping children. Thank you so much.
Thank you for giving me a chance to bask in Carol's clothes this evening, because she is the real star of this program. We were formed 31 years ago as an organization where churches went together to try to do a better job of meeting needs in the community. And as you see, 21 of those 31 years have been wonderful years under the leadership of Carol Lynch. She is one of our board members. We wish we could clone her, because everything that she does in our organization, she does with a great attention to detail and great integrity. And so, we're just very proud to be associated with Carol, and we find great happiness in this recognition. Thank you.
Our next recognition is the 2025 Wildcat Rookies.
It is always exciting to welcome first-year teachers both to the district and to the profession. However, this year, it's especially exciting as we welcome back 12 Wildcat rookies to teach in their hometown district. It says something about your school district when that many alums are willing to come back to teach the next generation of Wildcats. And we're truly excited to welcome home our 2025-2026 Wildcat rookies. So when I say your name, if you'll just come up and you'll shake the board, as your board's hands, and then stay up there, because we're going to want to take a picture, okay? You remember this from when you were here before, right? All right, so our first rookie is Alex Curtis from Ray Allen Elementary School. We have Skylar Curtis from Temple High School. Christina Durand from Sampson Howard Elementary School. Terry Ford from Temple High School. Madison Klemchuk Corley from Jefferson Elementary School. Haley Sawin from Scott Elementary School. And BJ Skirlock from Temple High School. We also had several others who couldn't be here tonight, but I'll go ahead and recognize them. Chantel Cyrus, Kiana Jenkins, Amber Lopez, Cameron McLaughlin, Hannah O'Neal, and Raven Watson. So we thank all of you for being here today. Can we get all of the rookies to come and stand in front of the board so we can take a picture? Come on down. Some of these people were in my class when I was a teacher. That's how old I am. We won't say names. It's all right, Coach.
And so, just real quick, just wanted to say, as a graduate of Temple ISD school system, I know firsthand what it feels like to return to the district that I was part of. The pride that comes from this is something that I always hope to instill in my students, and I hope that each of you feels the same pride and accomplishment that I feel every day. You are the role models that our Temple ISD students are looking up to. You are a true example of what our students can one day become. So thank you very much for choosing Temple ISD and our students.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Our next recognition is the CAT Program Recognition.
All right, so during the 23-24 school year, Temple ISD introduced its Certification Academy for Temple Teachers, or the CAT Program. The CAT Program is designed to assist paraprofessionals with 60 or more hours of college credit in becoming certified teachers. Interested paraprofessionals had to apply, interview, and get hired as a, excuse me, non-certified teacher by a district campus. Temple ISD partnered with American College of Education to help those paraprofessionals complete their college degree, and with I Teach Texas to assist them in completing their certification. Tonight, we are so pleased to be able to recognize the first group of CAT Program participants to complete their bachelor degree requirements in educational studies from the American College of Education. And so, as I call your name, you'll just come up and walk through and shake the board's hand, and we have some fantastic plaques for you. Dr. Ward's going to join up there. All right, so Sherry Hill. Ms. Hill is from Meredith Dunbar. Natasha Slaughter. Natasha is from Ray Allen Elementary. And Susan Thompson. Ms. Thompson. She's with our Cougars. We had two other folks that also completed their degree, Taylor Gillette and Maria Perez, and they weren't able to be here, but we certainly want to recognize them. We appreciate your dedication in completing the online coursework involved while also serving as a full-time teacher in the district. We are so proud of your accomplishments and your service to the student of Temple ISD as you complete this next step towards your teacher certification. Well done, teachers. You good? Oh, wait, before you leave.
Yeah, I'll make a few comments. So first of all, I want to thank our HR department for putting this program together. You know, whether you know it or not, this is a program that was talked about legislatively, has a Grow Your Own program that they were trying to model in some of the legislation. So I appreciate your ingenuity in that. I also want to say to the folks standing here and those that, you know, couldn't make it, they carry a very distinct advantage when they go through the program, because when they have already served our students in a different role, like an instructional aide, and then they become certified as a teacher, they know the Temple way, they know our systems, they know our processes, they know our families, and they know our students, and that allows them to really excel. So congratulations to all of you, and look forward to you continuing to do a great job as classroom teachers. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Surprised on that.
Mrs., I have the funnest job. It's the best.
Our next recognition is the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence Financial Reporting Award, COE, for FY 2024 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
So the Association of School Business Officials International has recognized Temple ISD with the Organization's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, or COE. ASBO's International COE recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and transparency. The school district earned the Certificate of Excellence for its annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the ACFR, for the fiscal year, school year ending 2023, marking the sixth consecutive year Temple ISD has been recognized with the COE. Temple ISD is the only school district in this region to have received this recognition from ASBO for six straight years. By participating in the COE program, school districts demonstrate their commitment to financial transparency. Applicants must submit their ACFR for review by a team of financial professionals who provide feedback to improve future documents. If the report meets the requirements of the program, it may receive the Certificate of Excellence. A district's participation in the COE program can facilitate bond rating and continuing bond disclosure processes. So tonight, we are so happy to recognize Temple ISD's whole financial department, led by, so when I call your name, ladies, come on up, led by Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Ms. Brandy Stanford, Director of Finance, Terry Burlison, Jenna Luna, Dina Vickery, Crystal Henkowsi, Donna Alimon, Belia Rodriguez, and Amy Branton. We are so proud of your stewardship of taxpayer dollars and your hard work in compiling the Temple ISD ACFR each year. Well done, ladies.
I just want to say, I want to thank the whole team for what y'all have done. It's a lot of work to put this together, but it also means a lot, not only to the board, but to the community, the financial strength and integrity of TIST, the transparency. That's huge for any school district, and it allows the teachers and the other staff to teach the students without knowing everything's financially sound. Allows us to make our decisions to know that it's good financial information. So again, thank you so much for all you do, for all your hard work. I know it's not an eight-to-five job, so.
Great job. Oh, sorry. So each one of these ladies are usually serviced behind the scenes. They don't get to see children in their natural environment unless we let them out of the office, which means we're not writing their report, right? But what I value most about each one of these ladies is every time I talk to them, they, the first question on their mind is, what's right for students? And what's equitable? And so, for those two values to be instilled in the finance team, I am very proud of each one of these ladies and what they contribute every single day to not only this district, but to the family that they've created here in the department. So thank you all. Okay, you guys can walk off now.
We'll get that filled out pretty soon.
Thank y'all for being here. Great job, thank you. Thank y'all for being here.
All right. Now is the time for the recognition of District 55 State Representative Hillary Hickland.
Ms. Hickland, you like to read between the beat, yeah? The 89th Legislative Session has been a busy one for our elected officials in Texas, and it has also been an impactful one for Temple education. Temple ISD is grateful for the work of our Central Texas legislators have put in during the regular session and now two special sessions. Tonight, we welcome Hillary Hickland, District 55 State Representative. Representative Hickland was a strong supporter of House Bill 2, which provided additional funding for public education. During the regular session, she has also supported House Bill 8, addressing accountability and assessment reform during the second special session, among many other important pieces of education-related legislation. Representative Hickland has demonstrated responsiveness and tireless work ethic in her approach as our representative. She stays in continuous contact with board members, administration, and attends school-related events to support our students and our staff. We thank Representative Hickland for her work in the legislature, and we thank and recognize her for her efforts on behalf of public education. The inscription on the plaque being presented reads, "Temple ISD recognizes Representative Hillary Hickland for her commitment to public education during the 89th Legislative Session. We are grateful for your service and dedication to support of the children and educators of Temple ISD. Your partnership matters and makes a difference in our school system and in community. Thank you again, Representative Hickland, for your partnership and your support. We appreciate you making a difference for our students."
I just want to say, thank you so much for everything you do. You first met with the board before you were sworn in December, when we sat down, went through a legislative agenda. That means so much to us, that dialogue. And then again, the board members visited you in your office, your staff during the session. You're responsive on phone calls, emails, and especially with Dr. Ott. I know those early, early morning calls and those late evening calls. Thank you so much for everything you do, and thank you for representing us and Texas schoolchildren in Austin.
Thank you so much for honoring me. Honestly, the biggest honor is to represent Temple ISD. I feel like every other week, you guys are getting recognized for something statewide, whether it's, you know, the leadership team, or the district, or the athletics, or teachers, or students. And obviously, that's the goal, the reason, the why behind all of it. And you do a phenomenal job, and I love boasting about Temple ISD. It's really an exemplary district in the state. And I'm so, I'm grateful that you said that I was responsive, because truly, that was my goal. But, well, that we're going to work really hard, and we are going to be accessible. I say "we," my team, legislative team, and we're going to be responsive. So thank you so much. I'm very grateful and honored. Thank you.
Item five is Executive Hires. I don't believe we have any items tonight. Item six is the Board President's Report. Item eight, Future Items Discussion. Anything members who wish to discuss at a future meeting? Seeing none? Item B is Important Dates, and Dr. Ott.
Okay, as you know, this week, later this week, we'll be over at the Tassat Asby Convention in Houston. September 14th, we have the Care Leadership Network Back-to-School Prayer Service. Dr. Donna Ward is actually going to be taking our place and representing us, because we'll either be coming back or still be, depending on how things turn out, still be at the conference. September 18th, we have Board Retreat Campus Tours at Thornton. We're just going to meet at Thornton, that starts at 8:30. And then, the cybersecurity required training will be after hours. That'll start at 4:30 that same day. September 23rd, we actually recognized Kennedy Powell. I think it was the last board meeting, if I'm not mistaken. But in that, I think I slipped up and let everybody know that they're going to have a PLTW showcase, or let their staff know. I don't know if they knew or not. For Central Texas, there are going to be a demonstration site, so we're very excited about that. I want to encourage you for being, or encourage you to be there. I know Meta's going to show up, and we're going to have several school districts from outside the area. Board Policy Committee, September 24th. Facilities Committee, the 25th. Those times have moved from 4:00 to 4:30. And then, our TEF, Distinguished Alumni Event, October 1st. We're very excited about that event. We're honoring Sharon Wilson. We're honoring Perry Cloud, I don't know why that, and Jerry Tyrock. All three of them will be recognized that evening. That'll be a special event. We do have a Board Retreat update, or Departmental Updates, the 9th, and that will be at 4:30, and that will be Student Services and Communications. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is Consent Items. Items A through J2, what is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move to approve the consent agenda. All items at one motion, 7A through 7J2.
Motion by Ms. Gallin, is her second.
I seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. Ayes aye, thank you. Item passes. Item eight, Action Items, A, Human Resources. No items tonight. Item B, Academics, 2024-2025 TIST Bilingual ESL Board Report. Mrs. Neres, welcome.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me here. And I would like to report what we did last year, a little synopsis, a little snapshot of what we've done. We're going to talk about our program model, enrollment, professional development, and instructional focus, where we're focusing this year, and then a little bit about our parent-family engagement. Again, our program models are, is the new, is the early exit model. And we also have a newcomers center over at Bonham and at Lamar and at the high school. We have 114, I wrote my notes so I can remember. I have 114, I believe, let me look. 114 newcomers this year already, and we have 35 languages represented in Temple ISD.
How many do we usually have? Is that, is this more than usual?
It averages around between, you know, sometimes, last year, we had about 100, and this year, it's almost hitting 120.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, we're growing over time.
Right.
And then, again, our population has, our enrollment has actually gradually increased. It didn't increase a whole lot from '23-24 to '24-25, but it was an increase. And last year, we were able to reclassify or exit 71 kids. And that's really something that I'm really proud of, because that means our program is working. Because three years ago, we only exited six kids. So that's an exponential number of kids to have been exited. Our teachers work very hard. Student enrollment, a total of 1361, and you can see the breakdown there, and the numbers in the colored boxes are our middle schools. Our middle schools hold a lot of kids, and with minimal support, and they're rocking it. They're doing a great job. We have some new ESL teachers at the middle school, at the middle, all three middle schools. And I just hear really positive things. They're hard workers and really do appreciate everybody's hard work. Last year, over the past three years, we have also increased the number of kids that we tested. Not all of them have qualified for the program, but that's the number of tests that we have used. And then, there you can see a list of our professional development that we offer. And I say "we" because it's Erica and myself. And although you can see that list, the one I would like to point out is the ESL Academy, because we're exclusive, one of the only districts in the area that does provide the ESL Academy to our teachers, and that's savings for teachers and savings for the district. It's a two-day academy that we provide. Erica and I are both trainer trainers, and that's just something that we're very proud of, that our teachers can take advantage of, so that we prepare them to take the test. And then, our instructional focus for this year is to incorporate English language development in, through content in pre-K through K. We already have, we had a program, but we have embedded some other things, some resources and strategies. And in kindergarten through fifth grade, we're piloting the Spanish state curriculum, and we're also providing support to the teachers. That has been very exciting, to say the least. The teachers have really embraced it and are using this product very, very much. Grades 2 through 12, again, we are implementing a new language curriculum and embedding the HQIM resources. So we brought down a program that we used in ESL in middle school and high school, and we brought it down to second to fifth grade, so that our kids can have that English language development time to develop their English, and so we can transition them a little easier. And then, the last bullet is to continue to support teachers to include EB Strategies in all content. Erica and I go to a lot of the PLCs or staff trainings or staff meetings, and we provide trainings to teachers as requested by the principals. This summer, we also had, again, we had a full-day summer school, language enrichment, for, and it's only required for pre-K, pre-K1, pre-KK. But with our title funds, we were able to add a But with our title funds, we were able to add a one first grade and one second grade class, which really helps those kids that need that bridging. That's where our magic happens, actually. We have a language-rich curriculum, accelerated learning, hands-on, but we also have parent engagement. And by law, we have to provide a parent engagement, family engagement, and community engagement. And so that was one of our events during our summer school, where we had parents come in and learn how to help their kids through the summer. So we've had a couple of parent engagements, but that's one. Can't present without showing you some pictures, because the pictures tell a thousand words, right? The picture on the left is Dr. ET, and I think that's kind of a cool name, Edith Tradiño. She comes to us from South Texas, and she came to do a family engagement with our kiddos, and those are all newcomers, the ones that she, that we invited. The picture in the middle, and you might recognize somebody in there, that was our EBCon, and that's our community engagement, where we have, everybody, a lot of people from the community come in to present or to display the different resources that are available in the community. And then the picture on the right is one of our companies that are recognizing our kids, and that's just a snapshot picture that I took to put up there, because our kids are even recognized by some of the companies that we use for their usage and growth. Family engagement and newcomer event. Again, the picture on the left is a picture of EBCon, and kids of all ages came and enjoyed. Our teachers volunteered in the middle. It's a picture of the teachers that volunteered their time to come and participate, and it's like we have, everybody wants to volunteer, because they know they're going to have a great time, and they know it's for a good purpose. And then the last picture on the right is the picture of all the newcomers that came to the high school when Dr. ET came, and they were all excited about the new learning and the strategies that she taught them. I didn't go to, I'm sorry, I got to go back real quick. I need to show you something, because this is part of the newcomer with Dr. ET. We had all of the kids at the high school that came together, and these kiddos don't know each other from different schools. So a kid from Honduras found another kid from Honduras, and they met, and then before they left, they embraced. And I just thought that was so touching, because they are finding kids that are like them, and that was part of the strategies from, for that day, was just how to acclimate to the United States. I'm sorry about that, how to show you that. And then the last slide I have is I'm proudly introducing Mrs. Erica Rains. She was our District Leader of the Year, and with that, I'd like to close. Thank you. Any questions?
Members, any questions? I just want to thank you and your team for everything you do for the kids and the parents in this district. It's a lot, this is, this is a critical, critical service that we have, and you do, and it changes lives. It really does.
And we have a lot of kids that come, that actually go to college, because we give them opportunities to, you know, tour a college, even though it's not that college they go to, but any kind of introduction, any kind of connection we allow them to have.
It's exposure they never would have gotten.
Correct, correct. But, thank you.
Well, before she leaves, I want to make a comment. Certainly thank Connie and Erica Voe for the successes that our students are enjoying in the programs and services, but I want to take a second to thank Connie personally, because I've seen it firsthand. But you know, people don't just wake up in the morning and trust an organization. That doesn't happen. But what they do is they trust somebody that represents an organization. That's typically what happens. And I will tell you that our EBLs, English Language Learners, they trust Connie. Our families trust, they trust you. They absolutely trust you. I mean, I've seen it, and that goes a long way with our EBLs, and it goes a long way in how they're willing to engage as parents in the educational services we have, how they're willing to engage with some of us as well. Like I said, I've experienced that firsthand. So I just want to thank you for the relationships and trust you have built with our families. That has gone a long way in the school district, and it's, more importantly, gone a long way in the success of our children and how they're engaging in these programs and their families. So thank you, Connie. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. It truly is a pleasure.
Item C is Facility Operations. Item one, consideration for approval of a grant of easement to the City of Temple for public sidewalk along North First Street.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. The City of Temple will soon be making sidewalk improvements along North First Street. A portion of the proposed sidewalk will run along the eastern edge of Lamar Middle School. The purpose of this project is to improve pedestrian egress and safety all along North First Street. In order to construct the sidewalk on campus, the city is requesting that the district convey about a quarter of an acre for easement purposes. The sidewalk will run parallel to the street, which runs along the entire eastern edge of the campus from West Virginia Avenue to the north, down to East Shell Avenue on the south. In your packet, you will find the easement agreement, which includes legal description, surveyor field notes, and maps of the property to be conveyed. Effectively, again, it just runs along that street. We support this important initiative. We believe it's an important safety initiative, and therefore, we come tonight and recommend conveyance of the property for the easement as requested by the city.
Thank you. Members, any questions? I know that Ms. Suarez has abstained from this vote, and this does require approval. So if there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. It passes with abstention noted of Ms. Suarez. Thank you. Appreciate it. Item D is Finance. One, public hearing to discuss Temple ISD's rating under the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas first. At this time, I will open the public hearing for anybody to come up that wishes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the hearing. Item two, consideration and approval of Temple ISD's rating under the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas first. Mrs. Stanford.
Thank you. So in an effort to maximize resources and not have to print these sheets, I tried to make a PDF, and then I realized our eyes can't see them, my eyes can't see them. So I printed them and placed them at your spaces. In fact, I even had to blow it up, so if you need it blown up, I do not mind printing you a larger one to read. But I had you apologize for that. What you have at your stations and what's up on the screen are the last three years. And so the audit report that was recognized tonight was not the year that we just finished up, but the previous year before that. And this rating also goes with that same year for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In the chart that I've given you, it's every indicator that we're scored by, but I've given you the last, the two years prior to that. So we're looking at the last three years, the last year that we just finished up. We are currently under audit. In fact, our auditor comes to visit us tomorrow, and so hopefully then we'll know the results of what that will look like in the next month or so. So going down through the ratings, the first thing I want to highlight is that we maintained an A, as we have done for the last several years. We also maintained the score that we maintain, that we had last year of a ninety-six out of a possible hundred, so I'm very proud of our team. On the ratings, everything kind of stays the same. But what I wanted to highlight is first, indicator number five, this one talks about the statement of net position. Of course, that's some legal jargon that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but what I wanted y'all to see in the green box is that we've actually increased our net position, which signifies that we are increasing our fiscal stability, which is something to be proud of. Indicator number six looks at how much fund balance we have, and if it's declining too quickly. We, in this year, we did not decline our fund balance, and the point that I just wanted to highlight there is if you'll see in an orange circle, if you can see that much, we ended with a fund balance in the twenty-three, twenty-four of unassigned and assigned fund balance of forty-one point six million. In order to remain adequate for the twenty-five, twenty-six year that we're currently just started, our seventy-day, seventy-five day requirement is twenty-five point one million, so we should have no problem with this indicator for the year we just finished and the following year that we're currently in. For indicator number seven, this talks about if, if our expenditures exceeded our revenues, and if not, we must have at least ninety days cash on hand. And so when we look at this, our ninety-day cash on hand for the rating year was a hundred and nine days. We have to have more than ninety, and so basically this is saying, how much cash can we convert quickly if we had to pay off all of our debt? And for the, for the year that was rated, our cash was thirty-one point five million, and this is because this is the year that SRFunds actually expired, but it's also the year that the Shar's reduction in funding happened federally. And so we went from a hundred and twenty-three days cash on hand down to a hundred and nine, but that is because of things beyond our control federally. In order to meet this requirement in twenty-five, twenty-six, we have to stay at thirty point one million. Right now, we're sitting, sitting at thirty-one and a half, so I don't perceive this being an issue either, but if it is, we will definitely be mindful of it before we make any decisions. On indicator eight, it talks about if our short-term assets are enough to cover our short-term liabilities. And basically, because we were able to increase our cash and our assets, but also we've took every opportunity to refinance debt, this indicated that we have reduced our financial risk. And so that is something that looks very favorable if we need to go out to refinance the upcoming bond. We have one that's coming callable in February that we're going to bring to y'all soon to look at if the market is right for it, again, just to maximize taxpayer dollars, save on interest expense. Indicator nine looks at if we spent more than we earned. In that year, it's a little misleading, because it does show that we increased revenues by about thirteen million. But what I want, want you guys to hear is that we looked at tax, a tax maintenance note to fund some projects that could not be funded in a bond, which was the Wildcat Stadium improvements that significantly needed to be done. But also, this was where the board and leadership team looked around the district and identified properties that we felt like we should sell in order to maximize our operations efficiently, to be able to cut long-term costs. And so that is something that a lot of districts don't do, and I applaud you guys for doing that, because it did help us out financially. It made us stronger. On the backside of that, on indicator eleven, it talks about bond payments if they exceed the market value. I'm going to talk about that one and the one below it, number twelve, because it talks about the correlation of future debt requirements in the district's assessed property values. These two indicators are the two places where we lost points, but I'm going to tell you statewide, this is the trend that you will see. Basically, districts that issue bonds to address either facility needs or enrollment growth will not be able to receive full credit on this indicator. So of course, we did both. We addressed facility needs, and we have a growing enrollment, and so we scored an eight on this indicator. On number twelve, the next one, the same thing happened here. I noticed across the state, if you issued any bonds after the year twenty nineteen, you were not able to receive full credit. And of course, we had our twenty-two, twenty twenty-two bond issuance that happened this year. And so we've been able to maintain a steady eight across both on those two indicators, but it's not something that, that we're embarrassed of either. It's not anything that we could have helped. We cannot help how the County Appraisal District appraises values, but at the same time, we're taking care of our students and our facility needs for our staff. On indicator thirteen, it talks about how much the district's budget was spent on administration. This particular indicator I am proud of, because we went from, three years ago, at nine point six percent. We were able to get that down to nine point four, but this last year, we got it down to eight point nine percent. So that meant that we were using more resources in our classrooms for instruction rather than administrative expenses. And so that means that we really just took a really close eye to every single line item in those budget planning meetings, in the expenditure meetings, and just really looked at where we could really focus the dollars, and so that's exactly what we're here to do. Looking around statewide, that was a great percentage compared to most districts, and so I'm very proud of everyone here for doing that. And then the last one is number fourteen that I would talk about, and that one just looks at if, over the past three years, was there a decline in the student-to-staff ratio? And this indicator really gives credit to the HR department, because they monitor the student-to-staff ratios that we need for teaching our students, and we did not have a decline, and therefore, we were able to maintain appropriate points. And so if anything, what that indicates is we're all a team. We all have to function together, and everybody here has made great decisions and made us financially stronger. So thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much. Members, are there any questions? This does require approval.
I move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gallin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Item E, Student Services. No items tonight. Item F, Board Committee Reports. The Policy Committee Meeting on August twenty-seventh was canceled. The next committee meeting is Wednesday, September twenty-fourth at four thirty PM. The Facilities Committee Meeting on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five was canceled, and the next committee meeting will be Thursday, September twenty-fifth at four thirty PM. With no other issues before us tonight, we are adjourned. Thank everybody for attending.